Good evening. I'd like to call our Tuesday, September 15th, 2020, meeting of the Michigan City Comic Council to order. Before we get started, I'd like to ask everyone to silence all electronic devices and for those present, please maintain social distance as best you can from the person next to you. And please stand for the pledge allegiance to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And to the council members, as you're speaking, remember to press your microphone off and once you're done, press it back off so we're not getting feedback. Ms. Nyle up on the roll call, please.
Did you say my name? Mr. Dabney?
Present.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Present.
Mr. Mack?
Present.
Ms. Deitch?
Present.
Mr. Don Presbleinsky?
Present.
Mr. Paul Presbleinsky?
Present.
Mr. Simmons?
Ms. Zegus?
Present.
And Ms. Tillman?
Present.
We have eight present and one absent.
Thank you, Ms. Nyle. I did speak with Councilman Simmons and he has a personal issue he's dealing with. So he won't be with us tonight. Approval of the minutes. So these will be kind of similar to the last time we had a live meeting. We'll be approving some of the things that we did approve via Zoom and virtual meetings. So those things that were passed will have to be approved again because we're in person now. So we'll be a mixture of those things as well as new items. So we'll be approving the minutes of our regular meetings from July 7th to September 1st.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Councilman Don Presbleinsky.
Second.
And a second by Councilman Paul Presbleinsky. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Okay, we have eight in favor and none opposed. Reports of standing committees.
All right, Finance Committee minutes. This is September 15th, 2020, Finance Committee minutes. The Finance Committee meeting was called to order at 4:37 PM by Chairman Dabney to review claims filed since the last meeting. Committee members Paul Presbleinsky and Tracy Tillman were present, as well as council members Giegus and Fitzpatrick. City Controller Yvonne Hofmaster was in attendance as well, as well as Council Attorney Jim Meyer. Claims reviewed totaled $5,010.20 from the Riverboat Fund and $86,435 even from the Boyd Development Fund for a total docket of $91,445.20. There was further discussion during the meeting regarding timing of reports, like the Riverboat docket and other things like that being sent out earlier to give more time for review. And also, there was questions regarding payment to the Economic Development Corporation, $75,000 that we paid in regards to contract that we have with the EDC. Councilman Dabney made a motion to approve the docket minus the payment from Boyd Development for James F. Giannini and Associates of $11,435. That was for structural repairs to the Michigan City Lighthouse catwalk. And the reason we're taking that out is because we need to check to see if that can actually be paid out of another fund. So it may not have to come out of the Boyd Development. Yvonne, could you please tell me what fund that could possibly come out of? The channel, it's a channel maintenance fund. So she's going to look into that and see if that can actually be charged to the channel maintenance fund. So that motion was made minus that payment and a second was given by Councilman Presbleinsky. And the motion was approved, once again, to pay the docket minus that payment unanimously. On a motion made by Councilman Paul Presbleinsky and a second by Councilwoman Tillman, the meeting was adjourned at 4:50 PM. And payments tonight are as follows. From the Riverboat Fund, Ace Auto Body Service, Inc., $175. Acme Communications, Inc., $285. Blue Sky Planning, $2,000. Cloverleaf Garage, Inc., $150. Comcast, $45.04. Enterprise Rent-A-Car, $604.55. Great American Financial Services, $1,025.84. Michigan City Animal Hospital, $225. Verizon Wireless, $270.08. And Comcast Business for $129.69. For a total from the Riverboat of $5,010.20. From the Boyd Development Fund, as we stated, or as I stated early, what was listed for James F. Giannini and Associates of $11,435 has been excluded. So the payment tonight we have is for the Michigan City Economic Development Corporation here, $75,000. So a total from the Boyd Development of $75,000. And I can't do the math, I didn't get just do the math to get the total docket of what's being paid tonight. Somebody want to do it for me?
It'll be $80,010.20.
What he said, for a total docket of, one more time, President?
$80,010.20.
$80,010.20. Thank you for that assist. Appreciate that. That concludes the Finance Committee minutes.
Thank you, Councilman. So approval of the claims during the COVID-19, for the claims from July 20th, I mean, July 21st, 2020, August 4th, 2020, August 18th, 2020, and September 1st, 2020. Is there a motion to approve the claims approved during our virtual meetings?
I move that we adopt, formally adopt, the claims from all of our Zoom meetings.
Okay, there was a motion by Councilwoman Deitch. Is there a second?
Second.
A second by Councilman Paul Presbleinsky to adopt the claims approved during our virtual meetings. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the claims were approved. So our September 15th, 2020 Riverboat claims docket, Riverboat Fund 2042, excuse me, Fund 2042 Riverboat claims were in a total of $4,880.51 with an electronic fund transfer of $129.69. The Fund 2031 Boyd claims were $75,000 and the total claims were $80,010.20. Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
A motion approved by Councilman Dabney and seconded by Councilwoman Tillman. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Claims passed. Okay.
Mr. President? Councilman Presbleinsky. Are we still on reports of standing committees?
Yes, that's where we're going now.
Okay.
Yep, reports of special or select committees.
Okay, the Labor Relations Committee scheduled a executive session last week, Thursday, at 5:00 PM. The meeting was to start at 5:00 PM. It didn't start. The only attendees and Councilman Presbleinsky had called two days ahead of time saying that he wasn't going to be there. The only attendees at the meeting were myself and Attorney Stahlbrink and Attorney Myers. So the meeting was, you know, it never happened and that's, I just want to leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Reports of any other city officers and departments? Please state your name and title for the record, please.
Hi there, I'm Jessica Arnett, I'm the City Forester and Department, excuse me, Vector Control Department Head. I just have a brief-
Can you come a little closer to the mic, please?
Oh, okay, that helps.
Okay, have no doubt, thank you.
Do you need me to state my name again?
Yes, please.
Okay, Jessica Arnett, City Forester and Vector Control Department Head. I just have a brief sort of preliminary report on some tree inventory data as our right-of-way asset inventory was completed earlier this year, back in May. But in the meantime, while they pull up my PowerPoint, I just want to say I'm glad to see you all again. I'm glad that everyone's remained safe and healthy during this very unprecedented year that we've had. And I'm just gonna, just give a brief update on some of the, or one of the major projects that we had conclude in the last few months. Okay, so as I mentioned, our right-of-way asset inventory was completed from March to May of 2020. I don't know if some of you may have noticed, you know, some of the engineers and arborists out collecting data, taking stock of what we have in all of our city right-of-ways. The project was completed by HLR Engineering, in which they inventoried all trees within our right-of-ways, light poles and trash cans. We ended up with 7,469 inventoried trees, 2,668 light poles and 85 trash cans. The project was funded through an indot grant, which was an 80/20 match, for a total of $91,375, of which 80%, $73,100 was covered by the federal grant. And the local match was 20%, $18,275. $10,000 of that was covered by the Redevelopment Commission and the city covered the remaining I mean, my particular interest, obviously, is the tree inventory that we've, that we've now, that we now have because of this project. So as part of this asset inventory, all of our street trees in the right-of-ways in Michigan City were inventoried. This data was collected by arborists who recorded the size, the condition and the GIS location of every tree in our city right-of-ways. That was then uploaded to our ARC GIS account, which displays each tree with a color that is coded to its current health rating. So that just gives us a really good idea, a really good visual of the state of our urban forest as of May 2020. The data for each tree can be accessed, or I can access it and edit it as, you know, the urban forest changes over time. And just to give you an example of what that looks like, when you click on any one of those dots, which represents a tree, it pulls up some information about that tree. So this one is about a black oak that's actually just out front of Kruger Hall here across the street. And we also have the data in a searchable spreadsheet in which the arborist noted, you know, additional conditions that they thought were noteworthy, things like evidence of pruning history, significant wounds in the tree, you know, or other things that would be important in sort of assessing the health of our urban forest. While this particularly, particular inventory only captures street trees, it is important to know that street trees are a critical part of urban forests and one of the most important locations for municipal forest management, as right-of-ways constitute a fundamental junction between private and public property. Street trees also typically account for 20% or more of the overall urban forest. And as I've discussed in previous council meetings, they add to the overall quality of life for urban residents in terms of aesthetics, home value, safety, air temperature and quality and stormwater runoff. The inventory identified 102 total species of trees in our rights-of-ways, with the most frequently encountered species, silver maples, which I'm going to talk about in just a moment, red maples, crab apple and honey locusts. As it stands right now, silver maples account for roughly 20% of our street tree population, with red maple coming in at about 10%. The well-being of our street trees breaks down as follows, according to health and structure. Health, just briefly, is, you know, generally an evaluation of the overall vigor of the tree, whereas structure is an evaluation of the tree's stability in terms of its growth and form. So for health, roughly 30% of our street trees are considered in good condition, 46% are in fair condition and 20% are in poor condition. Structure, as I mentioned, you know, is related to health, it's a fundamental element of tree health and survival, actually. As a tree can have normal or high vigor, but can have poor form and poor structure, such as co-dominant stems and branches, weak branch attachments, leans, overextended branches, all of which can contribute to decline and failure as the tree grows. I just have a picture up in the corner there of what co-dominant branches and stems look like, which is one of the leading causes of urban street tree failure. For example, a tree with co-dominant stems, meaning that instead of a central, one central leader, with subjugated branching patterns, there are two or more main stems that are of equal or similar size. And what happens in that situation is that you get what's called included bark. So as the tree grows, the bark compresses and it's not a natural branch attachment. And those, you know, increase the likelihood of breakage and then also create columns for decay. As I've heard said at arborist association conferences, it's not if a co-dominant tree will fail, it's just when. And so this is where some of the numbers become a little concerning. So when we look at structure, we've got 30% of our trees in our urban rights-of-ways are considered poor. 20% are considered to have good structure and 45% are considered fair. So this is, like I mentioned, just some preliminary data, as I've had time to sit down with the inventory and our GIS coordinator and, you know, pull different sets of numbers and look at them. So just thinking about, you know, what it all means going forward. And there's a lot of good, you know? I look at this and I see that nearly half of our right-of-way trees are in fair condition. You know, the trick is just going to be, you know, maintaining that status quo with the resources that we have. What concerns me a little bit, though, is the 30% poor structure. Because once trees reach a certain size, it's impossible, or nearly impossible, to remedy structural issues without killing the tree. Also, the structural issues tend to become hazards when trees reach a certain size, meaning that once the tree has reached maturity, where it's providing the max amount of benefits, that is typically the precise moment in which many of them fail or require removal. So it's, you spend all this time and money and energy nurturing a tree to maturity, you know, only to have, to remove it because of its poor structure. This is also where structural pruning early in a tree's life is critical. And contrary to what many might think, pruning is not easy on trees. Every pruning cut is a wound that trees then need to divert precious resources in order to heal. And every wound is also an invitation for decay. The larger the wound, the less likely the tree can close it, making it susceptible to insects, fungus, bacteria and other ailments that will slowly send it into a downward spiral. Older trees tend to not recover from pruning as efficiently and effectively as younger trees, obviously, because the cuts are smaller on younger trees and they have the energy and the vigor to typically heal wounds, whereas older trees don't. Another thing to point out, too, is that, like many urban areas, you know, we're not alone in this, Michigan City suffers from a staggering lack of diversity in our urban street trees. Silver maples account for a disproportionate amount of our street tree population. And this is an issue we share with other municipalities as well. The silver maple as a species is a very fast-growing tree, which made them extremely popular as landscape trees in the 50s and 60s. Unfortunately, fast-growing trees tend to be extremely short-lived. They develop weaker wood, poor structure, and they tend to not compartmentalize decay as well, as well as other slow-go-erowing species, whereas oak compartmentalize extremely well, silver maples, compartmentalization isn't even in their vocabulary. Instead, they try to outgrow decay, which is a short-term solution, rather than closing it off and preventing it from spreading. So having a large population of silver maples, I mean, it's good for, you know, tree contracting companies, but it's not good for us. You know, and silver maples are one of those that typically require removal once they've matured because they've developed a host of issues over prior decades that either couldn't have been or hadn't been remedied. I'm also interpreting this data in conjunction with the 2016 Chicago Region Tree Initiative Tree Canopy Study, that determined that Michigan City tree canopy cover as a whole rests at about 23%. And I do know that, you know, in addressing this in my February presentation, which seems like a million years ago now, you know, I had gone back through Tree City application reports and calculated that the city had removed about 700 trees since about 2015. And that's only city trees within the city rights-of-ways, it's not anything on, you know, non-public property. And while we've been able to replace some, we still remain at a net loss. And so this is where the 20% to 30% poor ratings in terms of health and structure worry me, as once that downward spiral begins in a tree, it's nearly impossible to reverse. And replacement, as we all know, is not only lagging, but it's costly. And it's also extremely difficult for young trees to actually come to replace the older or middle-aged ones. I wish that the solution to losing our mature trees was as simple as planting a new one, but there are many challenges, especially in an urban environment. The average life of a planted urban tree is only about seven to 20 years. It's difficult to nurture a young tree to mature, maturity in an urban environment, mostly due to lack of adequate watering, soil problems, including deficiencies and compaction, wounds due to vandalism or inadvertent accidents with mowers, string trimmers, vehicles or, you know, people tying things around them. And surprisingly, maybe to some, they also suffer from isolation. Trees really like to grow in cohorts and when they're alone in a tree well, they tend not to fare as well. Ideally, you know, I'd like to slow the loss of our urban canopy as resources allow. This includes employing preservation techniques in terms of maintenance and tree health care as our canopy ages, thus ensuring middle-aged trees are present and can continue to come up right behind the mature ones. And making sure we employ early care in our young trees so they have the best possible chance to live for the hundreds of years that they're meant to. At some point, too, this is in the, you know, the distant future probably, but, you know, I'd like to add to this right-of-way inventory and, you know, gather more data about our other public properties. The more we know, the better we can do. And I wanted to close with just a little bit of tree fun. I wanted to show you one of my favorite trees that is in our city rights-of-ways. My favorite tree so far, I have several close seconds. This tree is a white oak or Corcus alba. And as it stands now, it is one of the largest trees in our city right-of-ways. Standing under its canopy is actually very profound and I suggest you do it if anyone knows where this tree is. She's roughly 275 years old and her diameter is 53 inches. Her height, I haven't measured her, but she's probably 70 to 80 feet easily. Corcus alba is one of our most valuable species here in northwest Indiana. They can live up to 600 years, grow to 150 feet tall, have a diameter of eight feet or more. They provide significant habitat to local wildlife. They process tens of thousands of gallons of water a year in maturity. And she probably sequesters 121 pounds of cotton annually, equating to several tons of carbon in her lifetime. And just by this picture, you probably don't need me to tell you what she does for the neighboring houses, their utility bills, their quality of life. But one thing that I think that is particularly interesting about her is that she wasn't a planted tree. So this is in the 600 block of Pearl Street, a neighborhood that was plotted in the early 1900s, when this tree was probably 150 years old. So she's more the exception than the rule, you know, but the neighborhood was built around her. And, you know, to some extent, someone recognized that keeping a few significant trees would be worthwhile for generations to come. And it's my hope that when it's this old girl's time to retire after her many centuries of service, that she has plenty of other trees to which she can pass the torch. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Dr. Arnett. Before I see if anyone from the council has any questions, I would ask if you were able to provide this PowerPoint to the council as well as the clerk's office?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions for Dr. Arnett?
Mr. President, just a, just a comment. There we go. Deals with the wall bath street, streetscape by Lighthouse Place and the, the trees, the condition of the trees in that area. I know that the Redevelopment Commission probably invested a million dollars in that whole streetscape area and that's only been, I think, two years, could have been three, but no more than three years. And we've invested millions of dollars into that and the trees, some are dying, some need to be trimmed, the foliage, the plants in that area, the beds, they need to be weeded. To me, that whole area just needs to be cleaned up. For the amount of money that we invested into it and now we're just letting it go. We shouldn't have done anything and maybe invested somewhere else, but I'd appreciate if the city could look at that and get that cleaned up before winter time. Thank you.
Oh, no, I agree. We've, you know, because of COVID-19, you know, my department has been operating at half-capacity. And, you know, we weren't even allowed to bring our crews back on until the end of May. And so with the limited staff and resources that we have, the way that I approach categorizing and stratifying groups of work when it comes to trees in the city is through risk assessment. And so actually, my, most of my attention is, and most of my, you know, day is spent assessing high-risk trees and, you know, organizing the performance of maintenance on those high-risk trees, because the hazards that they pose are sometimes very significant. So the way that we've been attempting to stratify, you know, has been based on a risk
Are there any other questions for Dr. Arnett? Councilman Presbleinsky?
Thank you, Dr. Arnett. I would like to ask, are we looking into a way to make it easier for people to develop their own property and possibly look at making a point of, if we're going to save anything, to try to save the old-growth trees in that, in the area, if there are any? And I think the point that you brought out is, I think, in this whole scheme of things, with the tree ordinance and Tree City USA, that we need more education out there and to make it work. Like you said, I have some of my own ideas about how to get people to adopt trees. I don't think we've implemented that program. And I, I think that if people understand what we're trying to do, it'll make it easier to accomplish the end goal and get these trees to survive, because I know there's a lot of trees out there this year through the planting that are suffering. And, and it's been exceptionally dry and that's understandable. But what I'm getting at here is to work with developers on developing all these, there's a lot of land in Michigan City that's heavily wooded and I'm wondering if people aren't doing anything because of restrictions that are on them and, and, you know, trying to get something in place to, so get some new housing on a lot of these tracts. There's some big tracts of property that are wooded in town. Are you open to that concept or do we want to have this mindset of staying where we're at and, and making it restrictive on developing people's property? Or if somebody would even think about buying acreage in town that's heavily wooded? You know, I'm sure a lot of these developers- You know, I'm sure a lot of these developers check into something before they even make a move, you know, just like a business that's thinking about coming to town. And I think we do need some more housing, single-family housing in Michigan City, new housing. And, you know, I know that ordinance that I'm talking about was put in place about two or three years ago. But also, since you're here, and I'll try to make it brief, is that a lot of people don't even realize that the tree board wasn't even funded for three years. I went in there and I did some research and complained about it and finally got funding one year. And that's what was planted last year. So we, as a group, need to work on this totally. And I know that Dr. Arnett got a watering truck put together and, but still, I think we need to work on an adoption program and move forward on that and get people buy the apparatus to put on the hose so you get credit for all the gallons. Because I know them trees need to be taken care of. They need to be nurtured for many years after they're planted. I think it's a good project for the kids in school and even some of the adults in our community to know the value of trees in helping them achieve that goal on their critical stage. I don't, what is the critical stage on a plant? Is it three years after they're planted?
Yeah, typically. It depends on the size. The larger the tree, the longer the transplant shock period. But typically, you know, for the size of tree that's recommended to be transplanted, you know, per, you know, ISA best-recommended practices, is about one and a half to two and a half or three inches, and that's about three years.
Okay. Well, I just wanted to put them comments out there since you're here that we need to look at that as a group. And the water board needs to look at it. We need to have a cooperative effort with those people to buy the instrument, to put on the faucet on the house to calculate how much water they're using. And with your office telling them how much they need to do if they want to do it, I think that's very essential. It really is, to make the program go forward and be productive for us. Thank you. Thank you, doctor.
Agreed. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Are there any other questions for Dr. Arnett? Well, thank you, Dr. Arnett. We appreciate you coming.
Thank you.
Communications. So there were several communications received to the council while we were doing our virtual meetings, and they weren't addressed at the Zoom meetings because we were only to discuss essential business per the governor's orders. But am I correct to say that all of the council did receive the communications and had a chance to review? So we won't go over all of those. And there were several individuals that asked that their correspondence be read into the record. For the sake of time, we won't be doing that this evening, but they will be attached to the minutes and become part of the permanent record. So Ms. Nyle up on the new communications?
Correspondence. Correspondence was received in the clerk's office on August 13, 2020 from engineer Jeff Wright regarding community crossing matching grant the city received. Correspondence was also received on August 21 from Michael Couse, General Manager, Sanitary District, addressing issues regarding double standards within the workplace. Correspondence was received in the clerk's office on August 27 from Ms. Caitlin Farrell regarding water utilities being turned off.
Ms. Nyle?
I didn't read those.
Just the new ones for tonight.
You just want the new ones? Okay.
Correct.
Correspondence was received in the clerk's office on September 3, 2020 from attorney Jim Meyer regarding police commission members. Correspondence was received in the clerk's office on September 3 from Clarence Hall regarding Michigan City Tax Abatement Compliance Report. Correspondence was received in the clerk's office on September 3 from Chris Mathie regarding the pier and lake hazards.
Thank you, Ms. Nyle. So our resolutions, there were one, five resolutions that were approved via Zoom virtual meeting, and we need to approve them tonight in person with the public president. Attorney Meyer, do we need to go through each individual one and vote again? Or can we do them all? Or is it if there are objections?
Excuse me. With unanimous consent, you could do them all at one time. But if somebody wants to object and have one or more of them read individually, then you would have to read them individually.
Okay. So are there any objections to approving the resolutions that we approved via our virtual meetings together as one? Or do we want to go through and vote individually? Are there any objections to doing them together? Having no objections, is there a motion to approve the resolutions that were approved during our virtual meetings?
Yeah, Mr. President, I make the motion that we approve all the resolutions that were read and approved at our Zoom meetings.
Second in.
Okay, there was a motion by Councilman Don Preszbalinski and a second by Councilman Paul Preszbalinski. All the favors signified by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Okay, the resolutions are approved. Ms. Nyle, our first resolution by title only without objection.
A resolution by title only requesting the Michigan City Plan Commission review and consider repealing Section 17.02 in the Michigan City Zoning Code entitled landscaping requirements. The following, this resolution was brought to the council on February 4 and tabled at the March 17 meeting for review and recommendation. Due to COVID-19, this was not essential as being brought to the council this evening.
Is that, was that off the table tonight, or is that one that we did approve already?
We did not approve it. It was brought in. You said it wasn't essential at any of the Zoom meetings, so we're bringing it back tonight as tabled.
Okay. Is there a motion to bring this off the table at this time?
And it was introduced by Mr. Paul Preszbalinski.
Councilman Preszbalinski? Can you turn your mic on, please? Thank you.
At this time, I would ask that it be tabled for four meetings because I'm going to, after talking to Dr. Arnett today, I'm going to do some more research on this and ask for a workshop with the council to discuss this because I want to put all the information together so everybody realizes that the tracts of property that are developable in Michigan City and further development and to be brought into the city. There's one tract of land right now on the west side of Michigan City that's up for sale, 40 acres, and it's heavily wooded. Be a really nice subdivision. So I think that we need to look at that. So I would ask that we table this for four meetings. And I, before that next meeting, I ask for a workshop to get some of this information out there.
Okay, so there was a motion to table this resolution for four meetings and a second by Councilwoman Deitch. Is there any further discussion on this? Or after it's tabled, are we, can we discuss it now, or if we vote to table it? Okay. So is there a? Okay. So Ms. Nyle up on the roll call?
Ms. Ziegus?
Aye.
Mr. Paul Preszbalinski?
Aye.
Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Mr. Mack?
Aye.
Ms. Deitch?
Aye.
And Mr. Don Preszbalinski?
Aye.
We have eight in favor and no one opposed.
Okay, so this resolution will be tabled at four meetings, and then it will be rediscussed pending workshop? Correct? Okay. Ms. Nyle, our second resolution on first reading by title only?
A resolution by title only determining that funding for certain outstanding purchase orders should be encumbered and authorizing the city controller to encumber such funds. And this is introduced by Mr. Dabney.
Does the author have anything to add at this time?
Quick explanation, just given authority to encumber funds for purchase orders that have been passed, just to, like I said, encumber that money so that they're not spent on any other expenses. So we'll take that money, encumber that, and make sure that we don't spend any of those funds on other projects, programs, or anything like that. That's what this is doing.
Are there any other council comments?
I have a question. On this encumbering resolution, does this give, are we setting a limit on these? Because I personally, I got a problem with it because this purchasing orders, I don't want to see what happened last year during the budget process, that the budget got approved and then people were going out ordering equipment. And they said, well, it was approved in the budget and it was passed. And I had a discussion personally with Mr. Murphy about it, and he said, he just threw up his hands, and he said, well, too bad, it was approved in the budget. And I don't want to see that, and I'm not for this. I'm not supporting this resolution at this time.
We need a motion and a second, and then we can have discussion. We need public, public comment and then council comments.
Correct. A little rusty at this. Is there a?
We need a motion so that we can discuss it.
Yeah, is there a motion to approve this resolution?
Point of order. Yeah, like Councilwoman Deitch said, that the author introduced it. He spoke on his resolution. From there, it goes to the public. Then it comes back, then it comes back to the council for council comment, and then a motion is made, and then we vote on it.
Correct, correct. Yeah, that's right. I got, I got a little twisted myself. Yeah. It's been a while since we've had public comments. So is there any, any public comment on this resolution? Please state your name and title for the record, please.
Yep. Good evening. Yvonne Hoff, Master City Controller. This is basically a technicality that was overlooked when we were having our budget meeting with the DLGF at the end of August. He had stated that all of the purchase orders that were encumbered from the 2019 budget had to be put in a resolution and approved by the council. So these were, these were purchases that were approved last year that were not completed by December 31. So what this is, just fixing a technicality that was not done at the beginning of the year because I just, I wasn't aware that that had to be done in a resolution. We had never done that in the past.
Controller Hoffmaster, so is there a projection or estimation of how many purchase orders are outstanding that would need to be approved?
Well, these are all of the ones from the 2019 budget, and the majority of these have already been completed. These purchases have already been done, or projects have already been completed.
And they still need to be paid out?
Well, no, they've already all been paid out also. This is, this is just correcting and from, from the beginning of the year. So in January, I will be back before you again with another resolution for any purchase orders that we will be encumbering into the 2021 budget.
Okay. Are there any other, any other questions for Controller Hoffmaster? Councilwoman Deitch then.
Okay, so the resolution, I thought the resolution was to give money back that we didn't spend. And you're saying that this is to cover things from last year as a technicality? They don't, that don't jive for me. I'm trying to understand what you're trying to say. Because I thought you said that the resolution is to give back money that wasn't spent.
It says a resolution determining certain purchase orders as necessitating encumbrance of funding and authorizing the city controller to encumber such funds.
Okay, so my question is this. To encumber such funds, are you putting them back where they came from? Or you, do you have the ability to do something with that money?
Well, to encumber the funds, what we did is we carried these funds forward into the 2020 budget. And maybe I'm not understanding your question.
So you carry, you're carrying them into the next year for the next budget? I'm confused.
No, that's somewhat a misnomer. It's not into the 2020 budget. These purchase orders were approved in 2019 to be spent. They didn't get completed by 1231. So what happened was, though, as time went on, they were completed, most of them, and paid out. The DLGF, or State Board of Accounts, has a rule relatively recently that now you have to, any purchase orders that are rolled over to the next year should be approved. The rollover should be approved by the council, by resolution. So we're kind of doing this retroactively to, you know, January 1. And then as Ms. Hoffmaster said, come January of 2021, there's always purchase orders that roll over from the previous year. She'll come forth with a resolution like this, and you'll vote on that to roll it over. You know, if the projects aren't already completed and paid for, they're well on their way. So you were previously authorized them to be spent. It would cause a lot of trouble if you tried to cancel that authorization.
No, thank you. That helped. Thank you, Jim.
So another question. Is it possible that encumbrances from 2019 could also carry through 2020 and still have to go into 2021 or even beyond?
It would depend what, what the actual project, if it was a large infrastructure project, that, that would be a possibility. But I don't think we have any of those. And this is another project that, that I'm working on in the office. We have some older purchase orders that have just been rolled from year to year. And what I've done is liquidated those. There are things that were never started. So if it's something that a department wants to do at a later date, they'll have to come back before the council and request new funding for that project.
Okay, thank you. And for these, the current ones that are from 2019, is there a dollar amount for these or an estimation of what it, what it will be?
These totaled $1,354,438.43.
And do you have a brief overview of what these are for?
There, there were some salaries encumbered due to some back pay that was issued to certain employees that left employee with the city on 1231. So we encumbered some of those salaries to not tax the 2020 budget so hard. Let's see, we, we encumbered the election expense money because we had not been billed yet by the county auditor. We encumbered some repair parts from central maintenance, professional legal services from the attorney, other professional services from the police commission, a contract from the Public Arts Committee, engineering from the Boyd Development.
I know that. What development?
Let's see, contractual services from the Riverboat, grant, grant match money for MC Transit. Let's see, it looks like some engineering from the streets line in the Riverboat. More contractual services. It looks like some type of capital improvement for the South Golf Course. improvements to the airport, improvements for one of the park concessions, contractual services out of the Seated, more local grant share money, other contractual services. Looks like, and some money from the channel maintenance that was just for other machinery and equipment.
Okay, and this resolution only covers those funds encumbered in 2019, correct?
Correct. If you look at the documentation that was attached to the resolution, it'll tell you what department and what account number, and then how much it was.
Okay, thank you. Is there any further, Councilman Ziegus?
Yes, so my question is, this is basically to clean up the bookkeeping, because all of this has been already done. And this is just basically for the State Board of Accounts to make sure this is a, the document is brought to the end.
Correct. Yeah, yes.
Okay. Thank you, Councilwoman, Councilman Preszulinski.
I got a question on the Michigan City Transit on 300. Because you have two figures here on the amended budget, and then it says that year-to-date encumbrance. So if it was amended on this figure, and we only spent out $168,000, was that money, since it was allocated, was that put back in the coffers? And is that the money that we used in January to shore up the money? Or we just used straight Riverboat money to shore up the accounts in the first part of the year, right? That 3.6 mil?
That was available cash in the Riverboat Fund.
Right, but I'm saying with this money, with these figures, how you're running it with amended budget, and then how much was spent? And then at the end of the day, at the end, it says grand totals of $3 million. I think it's $597. And then the other year-to-date is $1,107. So in the accounting picture, you know, if I looked at this, and I was not aware of city financing and how that you try to keep track of this or do keep track of it, I would say, oh, you've got a bunch of money here that you didn't allocate. The point being is that the money was not spent, and you only spent $1,100,000 out of the $3 million budgeted, or over the $3 million, correct?
No.
No?
No.
Okay.
So this first column that says amended budget, what this is, is the 2020 budget plus the amount of the encumbrance. That's what the amended budget column means. Then the year-to-date encumbrance is the actual amount of the purchase order that we are asking to be approved in this resolution.
Okay. All right. So then you're telling me that you're still going to... Is there still an accounting going on that this amount of money is going to be spent out and we're going to come back at the end of the year and do this again?
The $354,000 that you refer to in this particular line item is the $168,000, which was the encumbrance from last year to purchase the three buses that were delivered in March of this year. The other $186,000 is the grant match for the 2020 transit grants.
Okay. So let me ask you this. How come, did they change the accounting practices with the Department of Government Finance? Because this kind of thing has been going on for, you know, quite a while. Did they just... What made, what happened that this was like a raise the flag?
Well, at the end of August, when we met with Kurt Ott, my staff and I, my deputies and I, met with Kurt Ott to go over the 2021 budget worksheets. And we had encumbrances listed on those worksheets, and he asked for the resolution. And I said, I didn't realize we needed to do that. He goes, yeah, that's been around for a few years. So I believe it's something that the city has not done in the past, but we will be doing going forward.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other questions for Comptroller Hoffmaster? Thank you. Any other public comment?
Thank you.
Any council comment? Any council comment?
Yeah, Mr. President, I make a motion to approve the resolution.
Second?
There's a motion to approve by Councilman Don Preszulinski, and second by Councilwoman Deitch. Any other discussion on this? Okay. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Okay, we have eight in favor and none opposed. Okay, so we're going after our ordinances. We are one, two, three, four... So we have five ordinances that were approved during our Zoom virtual meetings. And if there are no objections, I'd like, I'd call for a motion to approve these together. Or if there are objections, we can go through them individually.
I move that we adopt, but I would like to at least state what the ordinances were and what the vote was, so that people know. Because they weren't all unanimous. So I'll make the motion, but read out the actual ordinances. If nobody objects.
Second.
Okay. So there was a motion by Councilwoman Deitch.
I'm going to read them, though, if that's okay.
Correct. Councilwoman Deitch to approve the ordinances pending the reading of them and the vote count.
So ordinance, I move that we approve ordinance number 4543. That was voted nine to zero. Ordinance 4544, that was nine to zero. 4545, that was nine to zero. 4546, that was eight to one.
Okay.
Yeah, and that would be it. All by Zoom. I move that we approve those.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion? A motion by Councilwoman Deitch, and second by Councilman Paul Preszulinski. Any objections to those being approved in that manner? Okay, having no objections, those ordinances will be approved from our Zoom virtual meetings.
We need to say all those in favor.
Okay, sorry. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Ms. Nylo, our first ordinance, on first reading by title only, without objection.
An ordinance on first reading by title only, amending section 70-101 and division 3 of chapter 78 of Michigan City Municipal Code regarding the Police Merit Commission. Note, this proposed ordinance was brought to the council at the July 21st Zoom meeting. Due to COVID and it not being essential, it will be read on first reading this evening, which I just did.
Thank you, Ms. Nylo. Is there any comment from the author?
Yes, I brought this to the council to expand the police commission. And I thought that only having three members on the commission was... I thought at this stage that five members would be more appropriate and have more transparency in the process. And that to make it function a little better with having more input from other minds, that that's basically, really, that's basically it. That I think that we, it would help make it more transparent and put more of other people's opinions and thoughts in the process on hiring our police officers and going through their review process.
Thank you, Councilman. Is there any public comment on this ordinance? Any comments from the public on this ordinance? Any council comment? Any council comments? Councilwoman Deitch?
I think, so expanding it to five, and I know Jim can speak to this. So how would the appointments... So the mayor would get two appointments?
Yes, two appointments for the mayor, two appointments for the police, and one appointment for the council. And you got to keep that balance there. So it's, try to keep it non-partisan. I also think that I'm going to be looking at an amendment to incorporate the existing commissioners right now because they had, I believe they had an election for the police department for their one member. So I don't think that we should negate that, that I have to work on that for the next meeting.
The only comment I would have is that, when I originally looked at that, I didn't realize that how the appointments were made. But I do like in the ordinance, the background check. And, you know, what that brings, especially if we're talking about people who are looking at personnel, you know, and judging people, you know, on, you know, things that they, you know, promotions, hiring, all of that. So I agree with that. I don't know if I would want to go to five at this time, but I definitely think the background checks are necessary. Maybe that's something we start thinking about for some of these other ones that are dealing with people's, you know, personnel files and things of that nature. It's probably good practice to think about that moving forward as we start cleaning up some of the ordinances and the boards and commissions. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Preszulinski.
I appreciate those comments, Councilwoman Deitch. And my thought process was the same one. I thought it was... My original thought process was to have background checks on the police commission. And the reason being is exactly what you talked about, and looking at the quality of people that are going to be on that police commission. And I think that it's crucial, even with the Fire Merit Commission, that you want to have people of upstanding character that are making decisions on hiring your public safety officers. So with that said, I think that it's a whole caliber of people that some people may not want to do it. But a background check is, I don't think it's that hard to do for somebody. I mean, I did them, I think, for nine years for scouting. So there's a process. I think that people should want to do that, you know, to have more transparency on the police commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other council comments? Any other council comments? Having no further council comments, this ordinance be held over for a second reading. Ms. Nylo, our second ordinance on first reading by title only, without objection.
An ordinance on first reading by title only approving reduction of appropriations in the city's 2020 annual budget. And this is introduced by Mr. Dabney.
Does the author have anything to add at this time?
Yeah, just a quick explanation is what's happening here. The official term for something like this is deobligating. So what we're doing is taking money, or basically lowering this year's budget. Because after further look at the, you know, what we have in terms of revenues, we have to bring down these budgets that we have for 2020 because if these different departments spend to what they were given to expend, they would put us in a position where we end up making transfers again to cover. Because she realized after looking at last year's budget, the revenues that were used to balance the budget are not correct. So there would not be enough revenues to cover all of this spending. So what we're doing is deobligating these funds so we don't have them, you know, even if they spend their budget, you know, we would not have the revenues to cover. So we're just lowering these budgets right now in 2020 to avoid that situation where they end up in the red because of lack of revenues and, you know, avoid that situation where we're having to transfer funds to cover again. So that's how this is working out.
Thank you, Councilman. Any public comment on this ordinance? Any public comment on this ordinance? Any council comment? Councilwoman Deitch?
I was confused earlier. So deobligating, they just go back into, go back to the coffers where they came from. It doesn't allow anything to happen with that money. It's just sitting, it goes back to the general fund, Riverboat Fund, wherever it came from. Is that correct?
To be clear, you're not deobligating money. You're reducing the budget.
Okay, okay.
Not cash, budget.
Okay, so we're doing like, so we're reducing the budget so they won't say, I got this in my budget, and I'm just going to spend it till it's all gone, like last year.
Exactly.
Got it.
Trying to reduce the budget to match the revenue.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any other council comments? Councilman Dabney? Okay. Any other council comments? Having none, this ordinance be held over for a second reading. Ms. Nylo, our third ordinance on first reading by title only, without objection.
An ordinance on first reading by title only, ordinance and resolution for appropriations and tax rates. And this is also introduced by Mr. Dabney.
Does the author have anything to add at this time?
This one is self-explanatory herself, no denying.
Are there any public comment on this ordinance? Any comments from the public on this ordinance? Any council comment? Any council comment? Having none, this ordinance be held over for a second reading. Ms. Nylo, our fourth ordinance on first reading by title only, without objection.
An ordinance on first reading by title only, an ordinance setting salaries and wages for appointed officials and employees of the City of Michigan City, Indiana for the calendar year 2021. And this is introduced by Mr. Dabney as well.
Any comments from the author at this time?
Once again, pretty self-explanatory, just setting salaries for next year's budget, 2021.
Any comments from the public on this ordinance? Any comments from the public on this ordinance? Any council comment? Any comments from the council? Having none, this ordinance will be held over for a second reading. Ms. Nylo, our fifth ordinance on first reading by title only, without objection.
An ordinance on first reading by title only, an ordinance setting the annual salary for the mayor. And this is introduced by Mr. Dabney.
Any comments from the author at this time? Okay. Any comments from the public? Any comments from the public on this ordinance? Any council comment? Any comments from the council? Having none, this ordinance will be held over for a second reading. Ms. Nylo, our sixth ordinance on first reading by title only, without objection.
An ordinance on first reading by title only, an ordinance setting the annual salaries for the common council members. And this is introduced by Mr. Dabney.
Does the author have anything to add at this time? Any comments from the public? Any comments from the public? Any council comments? Any council comment? Having none, this ordinance will be held over for a second reading. Ms. Nylo, our seventh? I lost count. Seventh ordinance on first reading by title only, without objection.
An ordinance on first reading by title only, an ordinance setting the annual salary for the city clerk.
Any comments from the author at this time?
I do have a comment about this one. I just wanted to see Gail's face. Just kidding. But I just wanted to make note to the public that there were no raises in these salaries. So that's why I'm just, you know, there's no comment on these. There's no raises from last year. That's why we're just letting them go through to second reading.
Okay, thank you, Councilman. Any public comment? Any council comment? Having none? Having none, this ordinance will be held over for a second reading. Ms. Nylo, our eighth ordinance on first reading by title only without objection.
An ordinance on first reading by title only, an ordinance establishing salaries for the fire department of the City of Michigan City for the calendar year 2021. And this is also introduced by Mr. Dabney.
Any comments from the author at this time? Having none, any public comment? Any comments from the public? Any council comment? Having none, this ordinance will be held over for a second reading. Ms. Nylo, our ninth ordinance on first reading by title only without objection.
An ordinance on first reading by title only, an ordinance establishing salaries for the police department of the City of Michigan City for the calendar year 2021. And this is introduced by Mr. Dabney.
Any comments from the author at this time? Any comments from the public? Any council comments? Having none, ordinance will be held over for a second reading. Ms. Nylo, our first ordinance on first reading by title only without objection.
An ordinance on second reading by title only, adopting policy to allow 5% of riverboat funds to be used to fund the city's operating expenditures from the general fund and dedicating 50% of the riverboat revenues to increase the rainy day fund balance up to a minimum of $6 million. And this is introduced by Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Okay, I did want to say a couple things. This was something that I still think is necessary, especially knowing our current financial situation going into the next year due to COVID. However, I do think this should be tabled at this time.
I move that we table this ordinance until it goes to the finance committee.
Second? Okay, we have a motion to table by Councilwoman Deitch and a second by Councilwoman Tillman and Councilman Paul Preszbalinski. All in favor of tabled in this ordinance, say the five by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, this ordinance will be tabled, pre-pendant review by the finance committee. Do you want to say it now? Okay. Okay. I know we got the budget right now, so, yeah. Ms. Nylo, our second ordinance, oh no, our first ordinance on third reading by title only without objection.
An ordinance on third reading by title only, creating section 82-68 in Article 3, Park Rules, in the chapter, in Chapter 82, Park and Recreation of the Michigan City Municipal Code, to provide a mechanism for enforcement for all park rules. And this is introduced by Mr. Paul Preszbalinski.
Did we approve this already? Oh, this was the other one setting those?
This is the rules.
The rules, okay.
Yeah.
Does the author have anything to add at this time? Councilman Preszbalinski?
Thank you, Mr. President. This ordinance is accomplishing a task so people can actually be given citations that violate the park rules. As the research, we found out that there was never an adjoining ordinance passed to enforce or give penalties, monetary civil penalties, to people who violate rules down in the park. Now, when it comes to civil penalty, the police department can issue a civil penalty and then one, I believe one of the city inspectors can hand out violations. And I don't know how the park staff can do that, but the mechanism is in place so at least they can be enforced if you need to enforce them by the police department. It's a very simple process. So what I'm saying is that for all these years, we've had park rules and we didn't have them codified into the code to give somebody a penalty. Say if somebody was riding on the beach with their vehicle, a motorized vehicle, all they could do is tell them to get off the beach. But if they did try to give them a citation, they couldn't do nothing. Thank you.
Was that, oh, thank you, Councilman. Any comments from the public on this ordinance? Any council comments?
Yeah, Mr. President.
Councilman Preszbalinski?
Yeah, I totally agree with the author, Councilman Paul Preszbalinski, that this is pretty simple. It's giving the police department, which I'm assuming would be writing the citations. I don't expect anybody from the park department to go down and write a citation and be confronted by somebody they don't want to be confronted with because that's not fair to them. At least it gives the police department the meats and potatoes to write citations. And if people are breaking the law at Washington Park, then, you know, they should, you know, pay the penalty. You know, you have people barbecuing down there on the walkway, down by the beach. You either have that going on or barbecuing out on the beach and people, you know, with dogs running around the beach, which isn't supposed to happen. But it just gives the police department, if that's who's going to enforce the law. And that's not up to me, that's up to the park board, park superintendent, the mayor. Gives them the means to do it. Before that, we didn't have it. So it's a simple, you know, what, two paragraph ordinance? Yes or no? Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Ziegus?
Yes. So to me, you know, this is essential for the park, you know, department to be able to write, you know, tickets or citations or take care of the rule of law over there. But I believe this makes ordinance 4546 obsolete because that also had a means of writing citations in addition to micromanaging things like where people can park, et cetera, which I think should be up to the park board and not like, you know, just delegated by us on a whim, you know, for the rest of time. So I really think that, you know, ordinance 4546 will be, you know, will be not needed if we pass this one. That's all I'm saying.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any other council comments?
No.
Oh.
Public comments?
Yeah, we already asked for a public comment. This is Superintendent Shin, you can comment.
Can I make a comment before he?
Before? Oh.
No, go ahead.
Testing. My name is Ed Shin, I'm the superintendent of the park. And I would like to say that the ordinance that was passed 4546, is that correct? Probably would not be needed to be in effect with the rules. I totally agree with that. It's something that I do appreciate the efforts of the council to tighten up security in Washington Park. But as I said, after the 3rd and 4th of July, there was an incident that was not to be expected with the COVID and the closing of the Chicago beaches. We actually increased the ticket price in order to increase security in Washington Park. And after the 4th of July crowds, I did mention to the public at three occasions, on TV and on the radio, that I would like to see Michigan City get their pier back and not to see the visitors enter that pier and block it for the Michigan City people. So there might have been a little lack of communication that the park department did not have a reopening plan, but I just want to assure you that before you came out with that ordinance, we had hammered out quite a few different plans until we came up with a very good reopening plan for Washington Park with COVID or at any situation. The plan involves keeping the pier open to the Michigan City people and allowing the visitors not to enter lot number one. And I think that not only encourages and solves the distancing problem with COVID, but I think that the Michigan City people wanted to be able to enter Washington Park lot one and enjoy their pier. So in closing, I would just like to say that your intentions were good. Ordinance 4546 kind of puts a bind on the park department. We do have people at the gates now, we're complying to the ordinance, but we do ask that you amend it. This will now, having stickers only at the gates, will impede any Michigan City residents without stickers to enter for, let's say, the Christmas lights or Bolt for the Heart race or any senior center events will not allow people without stickers in. So we hope that you amend this ordinance, we appreciate your concern, and we do have a very good reopening plan whether COVID exists or not. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shin. Councilwoman Deitch?
That was going to be my question. I know that Councilwoman Ziegus had submitted something. I didn't know if you were going to move forward with that or not.
I did, but I was told that I can't put that in as an amendment.
How was their reading?
Well, yes, and I guess there's going to have to be another ordinance to strike that ordinance. I'm not really sure. So I have to learn about the procedure, but I really think 4546 should be.
4546 was adopted.
Yes.
In order to amend it, change it, or rescind it, you have to have an order, you can only amend it in order to.
Can you turn your microphone? I just think the people need to hear that. Can you turn your microphone on and?
Oh, I thought, I'm sorry, I thought I had it on. You can only amend an ordinance or rescind an ordinance with another ordinance. So that ordinance, once it's adopted, obviously before it's adopted, you can move to amend and whatnot, but once it's adopted, it becomes part of the city code and it can only be revised, edited, or amended, or rescinded by another ordinance.
Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Myers. Councilman Preszbalinski?
For informational purposes for the council, I had discussions with Councilwoman Zaggis earlier and with Councilwoman Deitch in that I am going to be bringing some amendments to the floor. But I will say this now, and I talked to Mr. Shin, the park superintendent, that I believe that the ordinance, and I will not get into discussing the other ordinance, I want to stay on this, but to make everybody feel a little bit at ease, I thought I should, you know, bring that up. But I will say that I brought that up because we had a situation and people needed direction and that was it, okay? It wasn't to micromanage anybody or to step on anybody's toes. But sometimes you have to as a council, that's our role, is oversight. And that's what that was about, oversight. Thank you. And I hope that we move forward on this so, you know, we can get it posted with the ordinance number on the rules that, and put on there, up to $2,500. You know, let people know we're serious. Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. President?
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Preszbalinski?
When we had, when we, well, what's taking place down at the park now, and Mr. Shin and I spoke about it, is we still have people working the gate. We have people working the gate on either overtime or, you know, Saturdays, Sundays, and for no reason, in my mind, people may disagree with me, but for no reason, that makes sense besides the fact that, okay, it's written into 4546, it's in the ordinance. But the mayor could have vetoed that ordinance and says, this doesn't make sense, why are we having people working the gate when there's no problems at the park? You know, I went down there Sunday, I went down there last night, and Sunday I was down there at, I don't know, 4:00 in the afternoon. Could have been maybe 100 cars in the parking lot, which is no big deal on a day like that in my mind. And in talking to some people, they're saying, well, we're going to be working this maybe till Christmas time. And I go, what do you mean till Christmas? I go, this isn't what was spoken about in the workshop that I attended. Councilwoman Deitch was there, Paul was there for a little bit, Sean was there, Councilman Dabney was there, Mr. Shin was there. And the first comment that the mayor said is that, well, what we need to do is go back to the way the park used to be before COVID and open it up to the public, whether it's sticker or no sticker, wherever you're from, you can come into Washington Park. And nobody's working the gates. We don't need anybody working the gates anymore. So that was his opening statement. And then my statement, right behind him, I said that I totally agreed with what he was saying, and that's what I was coming to that workshop to talk about. So then, and correct me if I'm wrong, as we got to the end of the workshop, I thought that's what the understanding was going to be, that we were going back to the way Washington Park used to be right after Labor Day, where everybody was gone, the gate was open, and we didn't have people standing at the gate. So, okay, and I know that there's an ordinance, and I know that, you know, people want to be correct and they want to obey the ordinance. But I know that this ordinance is going to be back in front of us quickly because we have to do it in order to make some changes here.
Right on it.
But why can't, and I'm not saying I want to be a lawbreaker, but I know that's the law, but why don't we just tell the people to get off the gate? Forget the gate, you don't need people down there at that gate. We don't have money. We're already cutting money from the budget for next year, which we did this evening, And just forget about having those people down there and we'll get this ordinance changed out and be done with it. So that was my take on that workshop and my understanding. But when I went down there Sunday and I saw those people working, I go, this isn't the way I understood this is going to happen at all. So I just wanted to make sure that that's the rest, the way the rest of the council understood it that were there that evening. And why it didn't happen, I know the mayor, apparently he didn't want to veto it for whatever reason, but he could have done that and then just called the council and said, hey, we need to sit down, make a change here, make a change there, and let's get to work on it and be done with it. That's my take on the subject and what's going on down at the park right now. We got people working the gate on overtime and in my estimation, for no reason whatsoever. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
Yeah.
Councilman Preszbalinski?
Point of order. Could I ask Mr. Myers to explain the process of the mayor vetoing the ordinance and what could transpire after that?
Sure.
I'm sorry. What was the question?
He said, what is the, what was the process of the mayor vetoing the ordinance and what follows?
If he had vetoed it, which he didn't, he signed it, but if he had vetoed it, there's two ways to veto it. One is to sign a thing, I veto the ordinance. The other one is do nothing for 10 days and then it automatically is considered to be vetoed. Once it's vetoed, one way or the other, then it goes back to the council and it's up to the council to decide whether it's going to vote to override the veto. But to override the veto, two-thirds of the council has to approve and vote to approve the veto override. But he signed the ordinance, so there's no need to do any kind of veto override.
Your mic isn't on.
The reason I brought that up for the council and the public, then he agrees with it. So as what I'm looking at, he agrees with it, he's had no communication with me on making any amendments to that, or I would have had something in front of us tonight. So all I can say is this, we're going to get it resolved under our. So, all I can say is this, we're going to get it resolved under our process and move forward, and that's what I was trying to get to before. There's been a lack of communication and leadership on this issue, and when I bring the amendments, we'll get into more discussions on the lack of leadership, and what was going on down here with things being said. Thank you, and I hope everybody can support this tonight.
Uh, Councilwoman Deitch, did you have a comment, Councilman Dabney?
Yeah. With that ordinance, I think the best thing for us to do is find the fastest way to get rid of it. It doesn't need any amendments, it needs to be gone. When we were in a meeting, the workshop, I felt the same way as Councilman Don Press Wilensky here, that he was going to write the executive order that would go through Labor Day, and then it was just going to be as-is, the beach is just going to be open and everything like that, so I don't see, I mean, that ordinance, because we talked about it at the very beginning, that it didn't have a drop-dead date, so in my mind, we need to find the fastest way to get rid of that ordinance, because it really serves no purpose at this point, so, you know, I don't think we need more amendments to fix what was in it, it needs to somehow be taken off the books, or another ordinance to come with a drop-dead date, and get rid of it as soon as possible.
Thank you, Councilman, uh, Councilwoman Deitch, and Councilman Mack.
Oh, I was going to move for adoption, but, so, let me say this, I thought that the park, the park gates were seasonal anyway, I thought, I thought we stopped taking money at a certain period of time anyway, and typically after Labor Day, I thought that was the norm, so I didn't even understand why they're there, since we discussed it, because it's seasonal, and we usually, you know, after Labor Day, Memorial Day, Labor Day, we collect money, and that's their rules that they do, so I'm not sure why we're paying folks and paying overtime for it, because it's something that they can handle. I understand the ordinance, the ordinance is about COVID, and social distancing, and making sure that we do what's right, but even with that being said, it's a seasonal perk, and we typically stop at a certain period of time.
I think that they're going by the literal interpretation of the ordinance.
Like, we've always done that, you know, it's like, when have we been so literal? Now we are, and it's affecting the budget, so I agree with Bryant, Councilman Dabney, in what he's saying. I will make the most, I will move to adopt, and then I know that, and you still have a comment, so.
Okay, so there is a motion to adopt.
Second.
And a second. Councilman Mack?
Sorry to say that I missed the, the meeting on the workshop there, because I would have agreed totally, I voted for that under the premise that it was over at Labor Day, but technically it wasn't there either, I thought everything was done at that time. I'm just not big on over regulatory fines on citizens and people like that, and giving authority to people to, you know, we've done that beach in a long, for a long wait, you know, when I was a kid, they used to pour people's beer out, they didn't write a fine, they would handle situations as people. Now, maybe things have gotten a little rougher here and there, but I still think we need to try to get back to process, and instead of us handing process to the park department, we should work with them to create processes that are similar to what we've had before, without interjection of fines. I don't think fines, and threats of fines, and signs of fines create different behaviors from people. I'm just not big on, on huge regulations from lawmakers, and that would be us, Congress, anybody else, because it leads to things like we're talking about right now. There's a lot of details in things that, that if you don't really work it out with good communication, it lends to debacles like this, so, because I sure wasn't clear on that at all, so, I'm just kind of an anti-rules-and-regulation-and-fines type of person, and I don't think I'll be voting with this one.
Okay, thank you, Councilman. Any other council comments? Any other council comments? So we have a motion to adopt and a second. Ms. Nyalup on the vote, please.
Mr. Paul Press Wilensky?
Aye.
Mr. Paul Press Wilensky?
Aye.
Her mic wasn't on.
Ms. Tillman? Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
Mr. Dabney?
An aye, and I think after this is over, we need to explain, because we got off talking about another ordinance, and I know the public has mailed these together, so we're voting on something totally different than what we were doing in our last discussion. I see Councilman Deitch over there shaking her hand, nodding, yeah, yeah. So for this, I'm voting aye.
For the rules, that's what we're voting on?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Mr. Mack?
Nay.
Uh, Ms. Deitch?
Aye.
And Mr. Don Press Wilensky?
Aye.
We have seven in favor and one opposed.
You didn't ask me, but I say aye.
Oh, I forgot you, I'm sorry, you said yes, did you, or saying no?
I didn't say anything but, yes, aye.
Thank you, she said aye.
She said aye?
Yeah.
Okay, so, I'm sorry. Seven in favor and one opposed.
Okay, the ordinance passes. Next unfinished business, FYI, the council has one appointment to the revolving loan fund, term expires 10/18/20, incumbent Jay Neese. Are there any, do we have anything on this, is there any, Ms. Nyalup, has anyone submitted applications for this position?
The revolving loan?
Correct.
No.
Okay. Nominations, the council has one appointment to the Youth Leadership Commission, term expires 6/1/2020, incumbent Nathan Patrick. Ms. Nyalup, are there any applications for this?
There was none received.
Okay, thank you. Okay, vote, the council has one appointment to the Commission on Sustainability, term expires 5/1/2020, incumbent Nancy Moldenhauer. Are there any, we did nominations last meeting, correct?
There is nominations of Nancy Moldenhauer and Ms. Laurel, is it Isaac? Ms. Laurel.
Are we, so do we vote on these tonight, or?
Yeah.
Okay, is, who are the nominees?
Laurel, Isaac, and Nancy Moldenhauer.
Okay, are either of the nominees present? Come forward, please. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
I'm Nancy Moldenhauer, I live at 107 K Lane, and I'm a resident of Michigan City. Michigan City councilmen and councilwomen, thank you for affording me this opportunity to appear before you and update our residents on what our Sustainability Commission has accomplished these past three months, since I was elected their chair. This opportunity is so important to me, that I have broken my agreement with my spouse, that we would stay at home and socially distanced to avoid public gatherings, at least until the end of December 2020, due to current COVID-19 pandemic. I am personally committed to health, well-being, and quality of life for our residents. Honestly, our Michigan City Sustainability Commission could be doing a lot to make this a reality, to save funds for our municipal government. Our commission has been laying low, though, in order to allow you, as our elected city council, to deal with the coronavirus pandemic and budgetary challenges, because you and everyone has been operating under essential service orders from our governor. Want to talk about carbon-neutral Indiana. Last month, we voted unanimously to promote free carbon emissions assessments for households and businesses. The assessment is based mostly on measures of miles driven, plus natural gas, electricity, and water usage. Helpful tips are then shared with the resident on how to reduce these, thereby decreasing their carbon footprint, and probably decreasing their utility fees. Also, an invitation with no expectation is offered to offset that footprint through purchasing tree plantings. So far, three commissioners have become carbon-neutral with other scheduling appointments. I'm writing a grant with their director, Daniel Pointer, for the Canadian National Railway, to enable lower-income families to participate and lower the cost of offsetting their footprint. Another program I'd like to talk about is the Solar United Neighbors. The most common question our commission gets asked is how to install solar panels in order to save on utility bills and lower pollution. As of our last meeting, we voted unanimously to partner with United Solar Neighbors, which is a nonprofit organization with a full-time director in Indiana. By launching this project for LaPorte, Porter, and Lake Counties together, the discount from volume buying and installation will result in significant savings. In addition, their director, Zach Schleck, will coordinate all educational offerings, send out the call for bids to installers, and manage the installations. I'm exploring how Indianapolis is enabling lower-income residents to obtain installations at cost savings through a grant. Another program we're looking at is electric vehicle charging, energy charging stations. I and Dominique Edwards have been coordinating with South Shore Green Cities to try and obtain deeply discounted chargers for our new South Shore station, and potentially propose mixed-use building site on Pine between Fifth and Sixth Streets. What would normally be $9,000 for a charging station would be brought down to $900 via the Indiana Volkswagen Environmental Mitigation Trust. We've discussed this opportunity with about half a dozen interested governmental agencies and nonprofit organizations, who believe this opportunity, which doesn't roll out until 2023, should not be passed up. I am pursuing a grant, which would bring the cost further down to $400 per unit, so that's from $9,000 to $400 per unit. We're aiming to have all information together and ready for submission on September 26th. Also, we have another program called Caught You Being Green. During this coronavirus pandemic, our commissioners decided to come up with a fun and engaging way to take people's minds off of our trying times. Our project team coordinator, Andy Janz Davis, and she's here this evening, back there, will be running monthly articles featuring members of our community, who have been engaged in environmental activities, and also feature photos with short captions of residents and businesses doing positive green things to help our city and government. Eventually, when the crisis with our coronavirus pandemic has settled down, our commissioners would request to sit down with you, our elected city officials. We would utilize our greenhouse gas carbon emissions inventory, completed by the Indiana University Resilience Cohort in summer 2019, to target those three emission areas we ranked the highest. We could potentially lower our carbon footprint, which would result in less pollution. By making plans coupled with grants, we would come up with strategies to resolve these challenges. Then our residents with asthma, COPD, emphysema, and lung cancer would benefit from breathing cleaner air. Another benefit of taking on these challenging issues and coming up with solutions would be potential cost savings to our city government, thus making more funds available for other community services and residential-oriented projects. I have been a successful grant writer in my professional career and volunteer services, raising well over $1 million. I'm writing two grants now, and will commit to write others as they become available in order to assist our city government and community residents, in addition to mentoring commissioners on how to be effective. I'm humbly asking you to reappoint me to our Sustainability Commission, so these projects may continue moving forward. Thank you so very much for listening to me, and for considering my reappointment.
Thank you, Ms. Moldenhauer. Is Ms. Isaac present? Okay. Were there any questions for Ms. Moldenhauer?
I believe we have public comments?
No.
I don't know if it's possible.
On nominations?
Yeah, you can.
Okay.
But I have a question.
Yeah, we're voting tonight.
Yeah, we're voting tonight, they would have done it the last time.
Correct.
Only the people that typically, but I do, the only question I do have is, how many seats are available, because there's multiple expired people on that commission, and I didn't know, and I think the commission appoints those, are there some vacant seats or?
The way the commission is set up is two seats are appointed by the city council here, two seats are appointed by the mayor, and then the rest of the seats are actually appointed by the commissioners, based on what the commission is seeing their projects are currently, or ones they're seeing coming up in the future, so we're able to unload experts in the area that we're looking at. Also, I believe one of the standing seats is, Clarence Hulse is on the commission, also from the Michigan City Economic Development Corporation. There's a total of nine.
I was just asking, because I think there's still some seats that are expired.
They're all filled, we're working right now on putting on our student commissioners right now. We have our high school student in place, we received an appointment from Crager Middle School, emails have been sent out to both Marquette High School and Barker Middle School.
Thank you. Councilman Press Wilensky?
I would like to know these, the grants that you're working on, you already discussed in your letter, correct, correct, Ms. Moldenhauer, is it Mrs. or Ms.?
Ms.
Ms. Moldenhauer, is that?
Yeah, I named the grants in the, in the.
The, the potential grants that you're working on, have they been, any discussion with the administration on, is it going to take matching funds, or, how's it, how's it going to work? I guess my, my thought process is if you're working on a grant, that you need, we need to be knowing our financial responsibility in it.
Right. The first one for carbon-neutral Indiana requires no matching monies whatsoever.
A carbon-neutral Indiana?
Yeah.
And what exactly does that mean?
That means you can have a home assessment or a small business assessment done, and you measure what your carbon footprint is, okay, and that's based on like mileage driven by vehicles, how much natural gas, electricity, and water that you use annually, and then you get a measurement that's called a carbon footprint, and that's actually pretty closely correlated to the amount of pollution that you, as a household or a small business, are putting into the atmosphere. People are able to do this for free, there's no charge. These interviews are conducted by students from Indiana University right now, and then they also work with you, and if they see blips in like average usage, if it's way above that, then they're able to work with you and point out ways that you may be able to bring those numbers down.
Does that have anything to do with, is that all about? Does that have anything to do with, is that all about the South Shore Green Cities?
No, that's different. That's a different, that's a separate one we're working on. I've been in communication with people in the mayor's office. I'm working with the planning department. I've talked to Clarence Hulse at the Michigan City Economic Development Corporation. I talked with the president of the Michigan City Main Street Association, talked with the president of the Redevelopment Commission. So I've been in communication with various city departments. This is not happening until 2023. So what we're doing now is we're doing an opt-in so that our name is on the list, and when this comes up, we could actually opt out if we decided not to do it. At this point in time, if I'm able to secure that additional grant, then the city would be able to obtain $9,000 units for $400.
Okay. Is that one of the programs, is that focusing on the South Shore Station?
No. I mentioned that another site had been mentioned by people in the Uptown Arts District and also by Clarence Hulse.
Okay.
And that's that piece of property that I know the city has been trying to develop as a mixed-use space with retail and business on the first floor and then living space above it. I did a complete inventory of all of the, actually Dominique Edwards and I did a complete inventory of where all of the electric charging stations are in Michigan City, and most of them are around the rim of Michigan City. We don't have any at all within the central business district of Michigan City and also the Uptown Arts District.
Have you discussed that with the Redevelopment Commission funding a program like that so it can be implemented ASAP?
Sure.
And what was their response?
They thought it was low-hanging fruit, and we should, you know, make a go for it. There's no guarantee we're going to get it.
No, I meant on them implementing it, to bring it downtown, the Redevelopment Commission themselves.
I've been in communication with them about it, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
Any other questions for Ms. Molenhour? Okay, thank you. So on the vote, do we just say?
I'll check the vote.
Okay, we'll go by the name.
Oh, you say nineteen or...
Okay.
Sorry, nineteen.
Molenhour or...
Okay.
Molenhour or Isar?
Okay, sorry.
Can there be public comments?
Not on these, no. There will be public comments following this.
Okay. Ms. Tillman?
On the vote?
On the vote.
For nomination?
Yes.
Either say it's Isar or Molenhour.
Mr. Dabney?
Molenhour.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Isar.
Mr. Mack?
Molenhour.
Ms. Deitch?
Molenhour.
Mr. Down, Presvalinsky?
Molenhour.
Ms. Stegges?
Molenhour.
Mr. Paul Presvalinsky?
Molenhour.
We have six for Ms. Molenhour and two for Ms. Isar.
Okay. Congratulations, Ms. Molenhour, for being reappointed. New business, the common council has one appointment to the Police Civil Service Commission due to the resignation of Mike Buddha. And I think the worst, have you got any nominations, I mean, any applications in, on time for this meeting?
I believe we have a few. Hold on. Lila Simmons was one, and Dennis Babcock was another.
Did those come in?
Pardon? No, this is for FYI. They can put them in for two weeks.
Okay.
The deadline for nominations is not until the next meeting.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Nigel. Are there any comments from the public? Any comments from the public? Any comments from the public? Okay, public comment is closed. Any comments from Mayor Perry? Okay, thank you for coming out, Mayor Perry. Any comments from the council?
Mr.?
Councilman Presvalinsky.
I would ask that we have a workshop with the Redevelopment Commission to find out where we're at with money and where we're going on the implementation of the lawsuit. I don't know, a lot of people might not know this, but there, I probably shouldn't even, I have to watch what I say, but we need to talk to, sit down with the Redevelopment Commission on this Bloxham property with what's going on there. And I think that has got to be in an exec session, so I don't know who, are you our representative?
Albert F. Skyler.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Presvalinsky. Councilwoman Stegges?
Yes, I just want to remind people, if you haven't filled out your census, 2020census.gov. It takes five to 10 minutes. Very important to get counted. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Tillman, then Councilman Mack.
I just wanted to bring to everyone's attention, for those that may know, or if you don't know, that the Michigan City Superior Courthouse has begun their reconstruction, their remodeling, and that the complete staff of the Michigan City Superior Courthouse will be relocating to what we have known as the Old Brown Mackey College. So offices, courtrooms, and things, the 40 Child Support Office will also be located there as well. A lot of the offices are in transition now, moving their offices to that location. I just ask the community that, to please be patient. We are still functioning. We are still open as far as receiving incoming calls or remotely, things of that nature. If you do have any pending court hearings, please make sure that you call the courthouse to find out the actual location of where you need to go. There are no court hearings being held at the Michigan City Superior Courthouse at this time. They have been relocated. Most of them are in LaPorte. So please make sure that you read your paperwork. If you are selected for jury, make sure you call beforehand to get the proper location of where you need to go. And this transition, the remodeling, as we've been told, should be taking approximately two, two and a half years for completion before we're back into the new building. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Mack.
Just wanted to say congratulations to Ms. Molenhour on that renomination as a liaison to the Sustainability Committee. You know, when we first met, we really had one, one good meeting, and then COVID hit, and it really messed up things for a lot of people, not just us. But just thought the public, you'd be really proud about the group of people that are assembled there. They're all passionate about the environment. They're very passionate about sustainability and eco-friendly things. I really enjoyed that tree presentation, but they, you know, that's not part of the board. But some of the individuals, we've got one that works in the school system that does just tons of things with Krieger Middle School students. The Caught You Being Green person, I'm not that good for names because we've been doing Zoom and I've been at most meetings, but the Caught You Doing, Being Green is going to be a great opportunity to enhance people's awareness of what we're doing around here. And the biggest thing that I'm going to hope and push for is our accumulation of data. We talk a lot of things, but that, I refer back to that tree presentation. If you don't give people data and numbers and studied information, it's just a lot of opinions. And the one thing that I am sure of, knowing the small amount I know of the people in that group, there's people that are really going to dig in, and they're passionate about that subject, and we'll be moving forward. So congratulations and thanks to all you guys that showed up there.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other council comment?
Mr. President?
Councilman Presvalinsky, then Councilwoman Deitch.
Yeah. I'd also like to congratulate Ms. Molenhour on her reappointment to the commission. She does a fine job, and that's why I nominated her to begin with. I'd also like to thank Sean Smith from the Street Department and Captain Jeff Linewski from the Traffic Division. We had an issue down on Hollywood Ave and Gardena Street with people running stop signs there right by Gardena Playground, and they helped out. They put in some additional signage, and we had that all taken care of by Tuesday. So I want to thank those two gentlemen publicly for that. Another thing, and I know that the police department is stretched on many avenues, but I think there was a issue in town, and that is speeding through the neighborhoods, of course speeding on the main thoroughfares, which would be Franklin Street, Michigan Boulevard. I see it more on Franklin Street because I'm down there all the time, but I'm sure it happens on Michigan Boulevard. You know, and I know that the police can't be everywhere. However, I do know that the city council, either last year or the year before, we bought Police Chief Swistec at that time. We bought them message boards and speed boards, and it tells you what speeds you're doing, and it starts flashing. I don't see those around town very much, and I don't know why the police department can't put one of those on Michigan Boulevard. I think we bought two of them, so you could put one on Michigan Boulevard, you could put one on Franklin Street, move them up and down the street, and possibly get people to slow down in that direction. And finally, and I know that Mayor Perry's here, and I'm going to ask one more time, I think this is the fourth time I've asked, is if the city council and the city planner and the mayor, if we could sit down and have a meeting discussing this DoubleTrack and any expenses that might be incurred with it, and, you know, what the future is and what we're doing in town about that. As I mentioned, at the last council meeting, we're getting ready to go through the budget hearing here, and we're figuring out the budget, but we don't know what DoubleTrack is going to do. And DoubleTrack's going to be here, I believe, in two years, the way I understand it. And the first meeting we had with them, and I said this at the last council meeting, the first meeting we had with Double, South Shore and Mike Nolan and his marketing team, I believe was back in December. It was right after we got elected, and we haven't heard, I haven't heard a thing about DoubleTrack since then, and I've been asking. I just think it's key that the city council, and especially the new, I mean, we have, you know, Mike Mack, Davia, Angie, and Ms. Tillman, brand-new council people, you've, you know what it's about because you've read about it in the paper, but to find details of it and what effect it might have on your neighborhoods, you don't really know. You know, like all these 13 streets that are going to be cut off, what effect it may have on your neighborhoods, things like that. The city's got to get out in front of this thing. Because I don't know anymore now than I did a year ago when we had these meetings, and, you know, that was 10 months ago or almost 10 months ago. Well, here we are, a year later, almost a year later, and we haven't heard a thing about it or discussed it or discussed one cost item that may cost the city. You know, I hear, well, you know, the city, you know, they don't have to pay anymore. They've already paid into it. Well, I don't know that for sure. Nobody on this council knows for sure. But I think we should know that, and if we are, if we do owe money, then we need to put a plan together on how we're going to pay for this. Because we're not talking $5,000 or $10,000. We're talking hundreds of thousands of dollars, if not maybe a couple billion dollars down the road. So, Mr. Mayor, if you would, please, you know, put a workshop together for us with the city planner so we could get out in front of this, and everybody's going to know what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman, Councilwoman Deitch.
Yeah, I wanted to just acknowledge the fact that I've had a couple of employees who have reached out to me with concerns, and I know that we've had some communications that have gone back and forth. Unlike the, you know, police and fire merit commissions where they have like a way to resolve issues and concerns, I'm not sure where we're at or if we need to sit down and have a conversation with the mayor or with the sanitary district or the water department. These groups that, you know, have their own taxing, you know, taxing their own taxing bodies. So they have their own board, and they follow, you know, that board dictates a lot of different things. And just, you know, we talk about retaliation and different things, but some things are not, should not be tolerated, and I don't know what steps we need to take next, but I just know there's back and forth, and I think some people won't speak up for fear of retaliation. And I don't know if there's been any, I don't remember when the last training was, if they did any sensitivity training or any other thing of that sort, but it should, there should be a zero tolerance policy when it comes to discrimination, and maybe this is a workshop that, or something that Tantanisha is involved in. I'm not sure what that is yet, but at some point, and I don't know if anybody else has received any phone calls or not from any employees, but I have, so I just wanted to make that known that I'm going to look at figuring out how to set up a meeting, because some of it, it might have to be executive session. I don't know how that works, but at this time, but I just want to acknowledge the fact that there are some employees that are concerned about their day-to-day jobs and the environment, in their, in their work environment. So I just wanted to share that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Presvalinsky.
I wanted to add a couple of things that Don was pointing to on this, having a workshop, and Don, everything he said was, you know, on point, that we, there's a lot of things that we don't know, and I also believe that the Redevelopment Commission needs to be brought into this so we can look at their assets that they have and their bondings that are out there, on what their financial outlook is, but also is that we do have substantial financial obligations with this South Shore project. And I asked, I asked the city planner for the traffic studies, and I still haven't received that, because what people fail, don't realize is that the downtown, all the money that's been spent on downtown is going to be cut off. You're only going to have three streets going in directing traffic into the downtown. The way I look at it, Washington Street, Ohio Street, Walbash, and you will have Franklin. They're going to cut, cut off all the streets on, to the east. And so Pine Street's supposed to become, you know, a blocked-off street. I personally got a problem with that because, you know, I know that they said, well, this is what they want, but then also, we have the cost that, to build additional parking garage structure on two floors, on the three floors that they're talking about putting in. So anybody that knows anything about construction, when you try to do a construction project like that, it costs a lot of money to add to, we don't do that, a parking garage. It's just like adding on a second floor on your home when you originally built the first one. It substantially increases the cost when you don't do it right away. So I mean, there's a lot of things in this whole picture, and we need to have the, some of it, I don't see why, I feel that we're, the people are withholding information from the council to know our financial obligations. I do know that they've spent a lot of money on environmental study, the Redevelopment Commission on that block that borders Franklin, 11th, 10th, and Pine. And they spent considerable amount of money on environmental study. And they spent considerable amount of money on environmental studies there. And when I mean considerable, I mean that they allocated in their resolution that they could spend anywhere from $400,000 to $800,000 on this. So with that being said, I think we need to know what's going on. Thank you.
Councilman Dabney?
Yeah, a quick comment in regards to the double tracking and that with the parking garage. Basically, this is a free parking garage. This is worked into the funding of the actual project, $430 million that they're spending from Michigan City all the way down to Gary. I sent Don an email that says $124,000 in terms of operation and maintenance that the city would be on the hook for, for the year. And those are dollars and costs that are out there even before, I mean, we could start to, as a city, start to charge for parking in the 430 space parking garage that they're building for us, so we can actually offset some of those costs. So one thing we need to keep in mind in regards to what's happening with this double tracking. We've been at the table. I think I'm the only member that was there from the very beginning. They can pull eminent domain and totally put us on the sideline in terms of having not a say in what happens here. There's federal money going into this project. They can go eminent domain and just run right through there and don't give us this parking garage if they wanted to do that, but they've been pretty fair in terms of bringing us to the table. I do understand, we do have new members here, and we need to get in and have some talks and get some information, but that's a free parking garage that they're dropping down on 11th Street because it's a part of the costs that are already in, you know, what's been allocated for them to do this project. And like I said, I sent Don an email talking about $124,000 in operation and maintenance per year, but we can offset some of those costs once we get up and running with that by charging for parking. I've been involved with them through the Historic Review Board, so I have, you know, if you guys would like me to reach out to them, or is the mayor, I didn't see when Don asked him, so the mayor will do it, but I do think it would be good, though, to have additional information come out for everybody to see.
Thank you, Councilman. Were there any other council comments? Any other council comments?
Move for adjournment.
I got one quick comment. Just wanted to say thank everyone for coming out, being this our first public meeting in a while. Hopefully, we get to continue this going forward. Another thing I wanted to add to the public, there's a lot of boards and commissions that are available for you to sit on, contact your council people, contact the clerk's office, go to the city website, see what seats are available. If it's something that fits something that you have area expertise in or you want to get involved in, there's always opportunities for the public to engage. This is, this city belongs to the residents, and there's no cronyism unless people don't participate. So this is just going out to the public, another thing out to the public. The budget hearings are coming up. Please look at the city website, contact the clerk's office. This is your money that's being spent. The city is looking forward to getting their 2021 budget in place, and I think it's imperative that the public engage and also know what's going on. As we are, your representatives making the decisions on your behalf, it's also imperative that you engage as well. So with that being said, I want to say, stay safe, everyone, respect each other and respect yourselves. Have a good night. Oh, we have a motion to adjourn by Councilman Preszwalinski, and a second by Councilwoman Deitch. All in favor, sing about it, saying aye?
Aye.
Good night.